The city council meeting of Tuesday, February 16, 2021. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Albertson?
Here.
Bueller?
Here.
Hoyer?
Here.
Hollein?
Here.
Lallum?
Here.
Manti? Absent. Rudemsky?
Here.
Roby?
Here.
Vilhauer?
Here.
Why? Absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Item four is approval of the consent agenda. Have a motion by Lallum and a second by Rudemsky. Any discussion? Councilman Roby?
Thank you, Mayor. Several meetings ago, I made an issue, at least one for discussion, on the uncollectible ambulance accounts receivable, which is item 4B. Just, I talked with Kristen earlier today. I'd like to see like a five-year analysis of that because those numbers are adding up. And what we're seeing is those that get submitted to the accounts collections people. We might get some of that back. But also, there's the ones that get written off that we never see. So those numbers, I guess they've caught my attention. I just want to let you guys know, I've asked Kristen to do that so we can take a better understand what's going on with that because those numbers are really adding up. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we have six people present, so we don't need to do roll call votes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. All right, item five is the public comments. And this is the time reserved for anyone who would like to make a public comment. To step forward and do so, please state your name into the microphone for the record before making a comment. And if your comment is related to an agenda item, please wait until that agenda item is taken up by the council. And please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item six is approval of the agenda. Motion by Vilhauer and a second by Lallum. Any discussion? Councilman Roby?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to recuse myself from items A, B, C, and D. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Hoyer?
Mayor, I'll be doing the same.
Okay. We still have a quorum.
Oh, it's good.
So that's good. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item seven is the regular agenda. A is application for a new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license to Watertown Lodging Ventures LLC, doing business as Holiday Inn Express at 2803 8th Avenue Southeast. Have a motion by Lallum and a second by Hollein. And I'll ask Finance Officer Kristen Bobzine to explain this to us.
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually, A and B, I'll kind of cover them together. Both of these are for the Holiday Inn Express out on 8th Avenue Southeast. Pretty straightforward application. I will say too that this location was approved by the Board of Adjustment. So if there's any further questions, I can try to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. If there's anyone here to speak about this item, please come forward and state your name for the record, either in person or online. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and entertain council discussion. Any questions or comments for Kristen? Or otherwise? Seeing none, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item B is application for a new retail on-off sale wine and cider license to Watertown Lodging Ventures LLC, doing business as Holiday Inn Express at 2803 8th Avenue Southeast. Have a motion by Hollein and a second by Lallum. And Kristen already talked about this one, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone here at this time that would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And is there any discussion, council? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item C is application for a transfer of ownership and location of a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine and video lottery license from Allen Scott, doing business as Sassy's on Broadway, 12 South Broadway, to Commonwealth Gaming and Holdings, Inc., doing business as Deuces Casino, 12, 137 5th Street Northeast, Suite 103. Have a motion by Lallum and a second by Hollein. And I'll ask the Finance Officer, Kristen Bobzine, to tell us about this one, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the transfer of ownership and location that we actually, was postponed at the last meeting, being brought back. Everybody, I think everything's been taken care of at this point. This would be the third license for that location. I think if you remember, I had discussed how this location is now broken into three different suites so that they could have the video lottery with those. If there's any questions, I can try to answer them.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing at this time. If anyone is here to speak about this issue, please come forward or state your name in the record. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, I'll take action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Mitchell, could you click on the little people symbol up above? On the top bar above Spencer, so I can see if anyone ever puts their hand up. I can see who it is. Thank you. That's all right. All right, item D is application for a special event retail license to shooters from 4:00 PM Friday, February 19, 2021, until 4:00 PM Friday, March 5, 2021, to be held at Crossing Plaza, the old Shopko, 709th Avenue Southeast. Motion by Vilhauer and a second by Lallum. And I will ask Finance Officer Kristen Bobzine to tell us about this one.
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually the first time we will be using one of our new special event retail licenses. This will be, shooters will be the one holding the event. It will be for the 15-day timeframe. Other than that, there's really not much else. This one is a little bit different too with use of this license. The location did not have to go through any Board of Adjustment or anything like that. So if there's any questions, I can try to answer them. Or Matt can also help us out if we have any further questions. Thanks.
Fun to use a new tool in our toolbox. Any questions or comments, council? Councilman Lallum?
So this is a 15-day, how do they transfer that from shooters? Or shooters is going to be the one responsible for it?
Shooters is the one responsible with the, with the new use that we have. Instead of actually transferring their liquor license from that location and using it at the other, they can actually be at both places now, using this.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Oh, I need to open the public hearing. And see if anyone here would like to speak about this? Public hearing's open? I see Bruce has a question. Bruce, did you have a question for the owner?
This is just, this is probably more for Kristen. How did we communicate this to the, the bar owners, liquor license holders in the, in the community that this is available? Have we done that?
You don't know if it was direct communication. This actually went through the ordinance process. It was actually a change to ordinance 20-44. And Matt can probably touch a little bit more on that. I can't quite remember when it was brought forward, but I don't know if anything was exactly communicated to them, like a letter sent out. But it did go through the, the process of the council meeting.
I wonder if that, if, if we had done that, if that might be a good idea to let those bar owners know that that is available to them, that we've made that change.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do a news release. How about that? And we're using the first, first time as a sample to give a reason for the news release. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there any other council questions or comments?
Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify, just make sure everybody's just clear on what we did there. You know, we've always had these special event licenses. All we've done now is create the ability for hard alcohol sales at a special event. And so, but I don't disagree, there should be, there should be a notice to the, to the owners of the bars. But we didn't create anything new here as far as the mechanism. We just created, we just added the category that allowed for hard alcohol sales instead of just beer and wine.
All right, thank you for that clarification.
Mayor, can I add to that too? Just from a zoning standpoint, one of the things this does is, is as our former event licenses did, this now eliminates the step to having to temporarily rezone a property for a formal transfer of a full-blown liquor license to that property. So again, it's another great tool in the toolbox and prevents property owners from having to temporarily rezone their property and then zone it back after the use. So it really helps with that conglomeration that we used to have to go through as well.
Right, and it also eliminates the need for the transferring license holder to cease operations at their primary location during the time of transfer. So this whole time, the shooters can be operating at both locations. So that's a benefit too. Anyone else? Councilman Bueller?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. Did, do we limit the number of times they can do this? I think we did, I just don't recall what that was.
Yes.
In a given period of time.
Yes, Matt, can you explain the limitations?
Yeah, an applicant can get up to four special event licenses in a year. And each license can last up to 15 days.
With a total time of not to exceed, is it 60 days total? Or is there a lower total?
Nope, it could be four, four separate periods of 15 days each. And they, there's no reason they couldn't run consecutively if, if they needed to.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt.
Yep.
Anyone else? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item E is the first reading of ordinance number 21-03, supplemental appropriations and budget line item transfers. I don't know, there's no motion on this. It's just, it's a first reading, so. Finance Officer Kristen Bobzine, want to tell us about it, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Before the council tonight is a first reading of a supplemental, supplement to the budget. And then there's also a budget line item transfer that's attached as well. I'll first go over the ordinance. A few of these things, kind of, as you know, we process the budget late in the fall and things happen and things come up and change. So I've had a couple departments approach me in need of some budget supplements. I'm just kind of going to go over them line by line. So the first one is under the cemetery. They had a furnace go out in their building. So the 8,500 is to supplement fixing the furnace. And then they also had a mower that, I think it was kind of a, kind of got lost in translation during the budget process. But instead of just one, they needed two mowers out there. So that's what the 12,000 is for. And then the very last thing is something that kind of came from the park board, is my understanding, and Terry is online if there's any clarification that's needed. But this would be to actually pour some foundation strips for the monuments to sit on. Helps with the maintenance aspect out there. That's for the cemetery. And then the, for the golf course, the mower, the 68,000, that was actually that bid that we just approved the purchase of. So that funding is going to come from the golf course and the Park and Rec Fund. And then at the softball complex, my understanding is that this will be for four scoreboards at $4,000 each. And I think those were two kind of came up past after the budget process was completed last year. The very last thing on here is for the capital improvement fund. This ties into the budget line item transfers that I'll be going over next. 10th Avenue North, the supplement of the 420,000 will be to cover the estimated cost of 10th Avenue. I think we're estimating that between 2.5 and 2.6 million dollars. The 420,000, we will have an unassigned fund balance just from a few projects not being completed last year and also not going to be carried over into 2021. So that covers that. Does anybody have any questions on the budget supplement before I switch over to the budget transfer?
Councilman Lallum?
Kristen, on that softball complex, are those ones that are going in?
Yes, that's my understanding that these will be installed in 2021.
And they're at Cook, I would assume?
No, Adam, these are actually the foundation fields. It was actually a question you, you brought up in the budget hearings. And looking back, there was miscommunication between the Parks Division and softball. They never got in there. So you're aware of the need. These are foundation field, the four replacements there.
Is Cook coming next year?
The other two at Cook, we are actually working with the associations on replacement for funding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Bueller?
Sorry, Mayor, forgot to take my hand down.
Oh, okay. Anyone else before Kristen moves on? Okay, good, go, Kristen.
Okay, so the second part of this is actually what we refer to as a budget line item transfer. During the 2021 budget process, what we needed to do is we needed to take the funds from the top budget items and move it to the 10th Avenue North project. So what you see is each one of those budget items will have their funding taken and given to the 10th Avenue North project to hopefully cover all of those costs. Right now, I think the last estimate that Heath had was between the 2.5 and the 2.6 million dollars for that project. If there's any other questions, I can try to answer them.
Thank you, Kristen. Any questions, council? Councilman Vilhauer?
Not for you, Kristen, I guess I'll direct that. Heath, what does this mean relative to your budget now for, you know, seal coat cracking, crack ceiling, milling overlay? What does that mean? Are we essentially, won't be doing much of that this, this year? Or what does it mean to your, to your department?
Yes, great question, Councilman Vilhauer. I'll share my screen here just so that, I don't know if everybody's looking at these numbers on their own accord, but for the public's knowledge, this is a list of the currently budgeted 2021 CIP projects that we had earmarked going through the budget process last year. We knew that with the 3rd Avenue Bridge Replacement and 3rd Avenue Reconstruction Project, along with the 10th Avenue Project falling on the same year, that we were going to need a good brunt of these funds to be pulled from these maintenance, pavement maintenance or rehab efforts. So we've been kind of, the staff have been planning to utilize these in that capacity. And you're absolutely right. So in '21, we will not be having a crack seal, fog seal project. We'll be postponing that into '22 and then performing it annually thereafter like we normally do. Same as the milling overlay project for almost a million dollars worth of funding. We'd be foregoing that project in 2021. And then we also had a half a million designated for neighborhood street improvements and then 150,000 for miscellaneous strange improvements. These funds together, of course, help accomplish the overall funding that's needed to complete 10th Avenue North full reconstruct. And Kristen's right, it's roughly a two and a half, 2.6 million dollar project that we're looking at doing. That is advertised for bid right now and I believe opens here the 19th, if I remember right. So we'll be opening those bids soon and we'll see what kind of pricing we get on those. Rest assured though, I mean, skipping a year isn't detrimental to the pavement network throughout the city. It's not ideal to do that very often, but skipping a year is not going to set us back dramatically as far as our pavement network is considered, our street network is considered. And it was just the nature of having to do that based on how those projects fell with 3rd and 10th. I would also note that because part of 3rd is not being done this year, we are still looking at doing a partial milling overlay project. So we were going to have some funds to put towards that as well.
And you're doing the milling overlay this year on 3rd?
Correct.
But from the 3rd Avenue project funding?
Correct.
A different line item, so there's some. Councilman Vilhauer?
What happens if we have a north ridge situation for a couple years and all of a sudden, or a 14th Avenue, it just blows up on us in the, at some point during the year? Is that going to have to come out of undesigned reserve funds or what do we do then?
If that were to happen here early on in the spring, depending on what projects we have bid out and are under contract for, you know, we could have some flexibility to utilize current year funds. If those funds are already spoken for because we've entered into contracts, we definitely have to work with Kristen and then the council to look at any kind of supplemental funding that we may need to address situations like that. But we try to, we always defer to the budgeted funding first before we look to supplementing it to see what makes sense.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. Item F is the Urban Renewal District 2020 Annual Report of Finances and Activities. Kristen?
Thank you, Mayor. Each year, we are required to submit to the council a summary of activities and then also the preliminary financials. So before the council, there's a brief summary of activities. As we know, the Urban Renewal Board does not exist anymore. So all of the activities have, that are listed on here have been completed by the city council. It goes over really the biggest two things that happened this year is that the Urban Renewal Assessment Rule was not approved by the city council. Thus, no taxes were created for the Urban Renewal Fund this year. And then the other big thing was that the city council decided to take what we had always called the Urban Renewal Loan Program dollars. And we actually contributed that to the Watertown Development Company, who will now be running that loan program for the downtown. The next part is just the finances, pretty straightforward. You can see that the cash significantly decreased and that was due to us providing those loan dollars to the Watertown Development Company. If there's any questions, I can try to cover them.
Okay, thank you. And is this just a report or were you actually looking for approval?
I need to have the approval from the council, please.
I need motions then. A motion by Vilhauer and a second by Lallum. Do you have any questions, council, or comments about this? Anyone? Councilman Vilhauer?
I'm assuming, I'm looking at Chris back there now, that we turn those dollars over to the development companies. They're being segregated and specially accounted for within your, your accounts, right, Chris?
That is correct. So we have a separate account set up at Reliabank for this. And actually, we've approved three loans so far out of those funds. So, yep, and kind of when the funds were over, or when you guys voted to turn them over, I think I said I'd provide a report whenever you guys wanted how that was happening. So if this is a year to do it on, you know, and this comes up every year for approval, I'd be happy to do that and provide the report or any time in between. All right, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone else? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item G is approval of resolution number 21-08, adopting the boundaries and approving the project plan of tax increment financing district number 11 within the city of Watertown, South Dakota. Have a motion by Hollein and a second by Lallum. I believe this is the marketplace and I will ask the city attorney, Matt Roby, to tell us about it.
Thank you, Mayor. This Tax Increment Financing District was approved by the Plan Commission on February 4. It's a proposed $11 million, 16,000 square foot mixed-use commercial and housing development. It would be at the northwest corner of West Kemp and 1st Avenue, kitty corner from the high-rise. It's estimated to generate roughly $3.1 million in increment over 20 years. And there are just under $3 million of eligible project costs. One thing to note about this district is that there is no accompanying development agreement at the moment. As you'll recall, the city was entertaining some, some financing options for TIFs. And we currently have a RFP out to the local banks to, to see if there's an appetite for, for financing this particular tax increment district. And so depending on the outcome of that, there'll be a, one way or another, there'll be a development agreement that'll come forward in the future. But I imagine Chris is still in the room and can answer any additional questions about this district.
All right, thank you. Any questions, council? Councilman Vilhauer?
Chris, I guess I'll ask the questions I typically ask every time one of these TIFs come forward. So bear with me for being repetitious if it seems that way. But it's more for the, the public's information. This does meet the but for test. In other words, if this wouldn't have happened but for, I mean, the development wouldn't have happened but for the creation of this TIF. I see that spelled out in the, in the document, so that is satisfied. School districts are kept or made whole throughout the life of this TIF as far as their tax revenues?
Yeah, this one is classified as economic development, which holds, like you said, they're, they're made whole.
Okay, and we have no city dollars being advanced? I mean, our, our risk is minimal, nil?
At this point, Matt alluded to.
At this point.
Yeah, potential upcoming action.
And I guess I would just take a look at the, well, it's page 207 of our packet, but the page where we, where we spell out how much is our allowable TIF in the community. I think we're at this, with this one, we're at like 37% or give or take.
Right.
Where we are, so we got a ways to go. I guess as we look at the next one, I mean, we've been utilizing TIFs quite readily. I mean, it's, at some point, we're going to use up, it may be quite a ways or many TIFs down the road. But that is an amount that we do need to be cognizant of as far as where we are, as far as the allowable TIFs that we can have.
Yeah, that's a good point. And we're always cognizant of that as we're entertaining projects. I think to one of our advantages, a lot of the land that we're picking out is assessed very low. So when you start taking some ag land or some downtown property, hasn't been assessed very high, we're able to. very high, we're able to get a lot of traction out of that number we're restricted to. So, but yeah, for sure, that's one of the things we look at right away, and we start piecing this together.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, anyone else? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item H is Tax Increment Financing District Number 15. One, Approval of Resolution 21-09, Adopting the Boundaries and Approving the Project Plan of Tax Increment Financing District Number 15 Within the City of Watertown, South Dakota. And two is Authorization for the Mayor to Sign the Development Agreement Between the City of Watertown and the Plains Apartments LLC for Tax Increment District Number 15. Matt, should I take two separate motions? Or can I wrap them together? Is it all in the same resolution?
Yeah, you could, you could take this one motion to approve both of those in one fell swoop.
Okay. Yep, I got a motion, is that a motion? Motion from Lalum.
Second.
And a second by Rademski. And I will ask the city attorney, Matt Robey, to tell us about it, please.
Thanks, Mayor. This is Tax Increment Financing District Number 15. It was approved by the Plan Commission, the last Plan Commission, February 4th. The developer here is the Plains Apartments LLC. It's a group out of, predominantly out of Fargo, I believe. This is a little bit different than some of the other TIFs we've had, as I believe this is the first one that we will be considering. It is classified as affordable housing. It is not, it is not, there's no commercial or retail component of it. It is three, the plan is for three 72-unit apartment complexes. It looks to be in the ballpark of a $20 million project that'll generate roughly $5.9 million in increment over the life of the TIF. The eligible project costs here are actually 8, 8.5 million roughly, and so the development agreement essentially says that we're paying them 8.5, but more fairly certain that they won't actually get paid that amount. They'll get, essentially, they'll let us get paid for 20 years, all the increment, and then the TIF district will end at that time.
All right, thank you. Councilman Hoyer?
I don't know if we have any clarification. In the document, as far as it's page 255 of 285, it talks about the 2020 state median income. In order for this to be affordable housing, I understand that it's supposed to be based off the 80% rate, correct? So when I pulled up the HUD for 2020, and I just want somebody maybe to explain it to me here, but the low 80% income limits were, for a four-person family is $60,550. The state median income, just in general, for Cottington County is $75,700. I'm just curious where they're pulling their numbers.
Yeah, so there's two separate things. So you've got the income limits, but then there's also a separate document, I believe that's attached to this plan at the end that shows the rent limit. So an affordable housing TIF for multifamily, they're not worried about the income limits, there's more just a rent limit restriction, and I believe those were included in this plan.
Yeah, if you go to, I can share my screen here real quick.
Matt, while you're doing that, too, can you address it with the affordable housing definition as outlined for the TIF? That's kinda where I'm getting thrown off with it, just because as the monthly rental rate, housing units in the district will be at or below the calculated rent for the state's 80% area median income.
Yeah, and Matt, just in case, so this is, so we submit these plans to the Department of Revenue for pre-classification, and then they come back and say, no, it can be this or that. So we just follow their rules, which they put out here. So I mean, as far as defining where they get those, I'm not certain, other than they say you have to follow these guidelines, which we attach to the plan.
Yeah, you should be able to, I believe they're up, is that correct?
No, they're on the screen.
Yeah, okay. So that's the, that's the levels as outlined in state law.
People may disagree, but that's a definition by state law.
And that's why affordable housing is a terrible term to use. So I've always thought we should change the name because affordable is relative to different situations, so just, yes. But, so in their plan, they have to follow these rents, they have to report every year their rent roll for the first five years of their project.
All right. Other comments or questions from the council?
Well, now I'm just curious where the state gets the, or where they post it for us to find it, because I've been trying to find this for the last 10 minutes and can't even find that on like state websites.
They sent it to us, so I didn't search very far, we asked them to send us the info and they did.
It's in the bottom drawer.
And there is a difference between affordable and low income, so I do understand that.
That's true, yep. That's a good point, is these are not low-income restricted housing units.
Councilman Villar?
Just add one question, I won't go through the litany of other questions, but because it's a little bit of different sort of TIF, back to school issue, schools are still kept whole with this sort of range?
Yes, yep, there's three classifications, industrial, economic development, and housing. All are the same effect to school and county. A local TIF is not, but that's different, so this, that's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, and there is a development agreement along with this, and I just want to clarify for public knowledge, that this will create an increment, and the city will pay the developer an amount, but not more than the increment, the actual increment. Is that true, Matt? Or it's, it's-
Correct. This is a little bit, this is the other way, this one's a little bit unique, is that typically in the TIFs we've done up until now, except for TIF 10, we've more or less, the eligible project costs have been closely aligned with the estimated TIF increment that'll be generated. Where here, the estimated increment is quite a bit less than the actual project costs, the eligible project costs. So the development agreement, in the way that state law reads, that you either, you pay out the eligible project costs or 20 years, whichever, whichever happens first. And so we're essentially, we're going to pay, we've committed to pay for all the eligible project costs, but in this case, it's almost certain that 20 years will happen first. So this TIF will end basically after 20 years. Will this pay as much as, as much increment is generated over 20 years and then it will end?
Okay, so if the increment is less than was anticipated, the taxpayers aren't in the hole?
Nope. The other, yeah, the other, you know, similarity here to another one of our TIFs, to the Terex TIF, this is a pay-as-you-go, there's no financing provided by the public other than the TIF. So after 20 years, whatever dollar amount we just pass through pursuant to this TIF district will be it. After 20 years, it just ends, and the developers are under, understand that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilman Hoyer?
Maybe this got answered. With Glenn's question, it's just, I guess I'm not used to seeing it just because the other ones haven't been this before, and I don't mean to be so nitpicky with it, I just want to make sure there's really a warm and fuzzy, because most folks don't have a warm and fuzzy on a TIF anyway, even as many times as we get educated on them, they're just loads of fun. But in the language on 252 of 285, where it says, "TIF District Number 15 is expected to be classified as affordable housing, therefore, this classification is exempt from the provisions of SDCL 10-12-44-1 that require the county auditor to impose an additional school levy on real property within the district. Any incremental value in affordable housing development, TIF District is not considered in the state aid to education formula." When you pull that up, it talks about basically raising additional revenue to make up for it. Is that just understanding that we don't do that, that we will not do that additional levy? I just want to make sure I understood that language right, and I think that's kinda what you said, but I just, again, want a warm fuzzy.
Yeah, that's, I don't know, Chris can answer again, too. That is correct, though. It falls into one of those classifications as laid out in statute, affordable housing, industrial, or economic development. The state education fund is held harmless. It's only in the instances of a local TIF, which essentially means that we approve a TIF that does not fall into any statutory classification, that the, that the county treasurer is directed to apply that additional property tax to make up that revenue. So hopefully that is enough of a warm fuzzy. I don't know, Chris can talk to it.
Well, yeah, I mean, certainly, I don't disagree with your TIF assessment of public perception. I've always thought they should take the word tax out of it, and I don't know if that would raise anybody's red flag. But, so a couple of things to note on this one is, as you guys are aware, we've been preaching that we are extremely short on housing units. So we did actually try to submit this one under economic development, just because we thought it would provide housing for workforce, which is really economic development. But, so, because essentially to avoid what, you know, the issue on the affordable was, so it's just one less thing to try to explain that is really complicated to explain. But, so nonetheless, also, this is the first project in the state history to be approved by the ready fund. So last year, we lobbied to get ready funds allowed to be used for housing projects, and this was one of the first ones. So that's exciting, and we'll provide some much-needed workforce housing style, you know, two, three-bedroom garage-style apartments for our workforce.
This doesn't have garages particularly, does it?
Yep.
Oh, it does?
So one unit for sure will have underground parking, but there will be your standard garages like you see in other workforce-style developments that we've had in the past.
Separate buildings.
Right.
In the table, it doesn't, I guess it doesn't include that, but it doesn't need to because it's not housing.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? This may be the first, but I bet it's not the last.
Oh, yeah, probably not, I mean-
I think everybody has the same issue that we have with workforce housing.
Yeah, in fact, they're, they're essentially out of money for the housing fund ready portion right now.
But for next year and years to come.
Yeah, I mean, there'll be, you know, as we look at projects to address our need, you know, the more, the more we're visiting with employers and LATC, the more worried I get of our housing situation. So definitely is going to be an ongoing discussion, I think, for a couple more years, for sure.
Right. Councilman Hoyer?
And I will say, too, Chris, like I absolutely acknowledge that we have a need for more housing, more apartments. But again, I just hope that we have some developers in the future here that look towards actually making some permanent housing available to people at a lower level.
Got one coming for you.
Beautiful. Love to hear it.
Anyone else?
Matt, Mayor, can I make one quick comment? I just wanted to thank staff for their time on this, including Chris and his staff, Tracy, they did a lot of the front-end work on these TIFs, and then they come through the planning and zoning office, and then, of course, Matt's assistant. But Brandy and Stacey are both online tonight with us, and they put a lot of effort into these and helping review things, and I just wanted to thank them for their efforts as well. So it's a, definitely a group effort, and we're getting things in sync after processing as many as we have, and that's a good thing.
Yeah, a lot of, these are large documents, so more ayes the better, and a lot of input, so appreciate it as well.
Yeah. All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item I is Approval of Resolution Number 21-11, Acceptance for Subdivision Improvements for the New Venture Third Edition Subdivision installed by J&amp;J Earthworks on behalf of the developer, New Venture Inc., and Lake City Hospitality Inc. I have a motion by Holene and a second by Lalum, and I will ask Mr. Von I to tell us about this.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution of acceptance, so this is the final step of a development, typical development process that includes public improvements. If you recall, it's been, it's been a little bit over a year ago now, September of 2019, that we issued a certificate of completion. That's what starts the one-year warranty time clock, and we've since, since that year has passed now, engineering staff have gone out and re-inspected all the public improvements, which includes sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and street improvements, along with the necessary curb ramps for the sidewalk, and then necessary sidewalk improvements for the developed lots in this area. Justin Peterson, Assistant City Engineer, has gone out and confirmed that the terms of the development agreement have been met, and for reference, I've got my map that I'm sharing on the screen that shows the general vicinity of where we're dealing with. This is out by the interstate, north of the McDonald's out there, and this is the My Place Hotel that was constructed a year and a half or so ago. So the, some of the street improvements primarily include 35th Street and 7th Avenue. With that, I know Justin's online with us, and he and I will stand by for any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions, council? Councilman Robey?
Thank you, Mayor. Heath, the best management practices issue we've talked about in the past, is that an addendum? Is it part of the contract? How is that involved with this one?
As far as B&amp;P Maintenance Agreement, yes, that's a great question. One that I don't know off the top of my head, I'm glad Brandy was still online, her or Justin, if you guys could chime in as to what the status of our B&amp;P Maintenance Agreement is for this area?
I can do that. So we actually do have it drafted for the New Venture Third. I actually just, there's two entities because the, there is a detention pond over to the west of where you can see on Heath's screen there. There you go. Yeah, so that area is owned by a different entity, and then My Place LLC owns where My Place is located, and there's also a detention pond. So I just need to get those finalized, and then I'll get Bill Folger's signature, but I've been in contact with him.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item J is Authorization for the Mayor to Sign a Professional Services Agreement with Norby Golf Course Design, Inc., for design services related to the rebid and updated scope of the 2020 Greens Replacement Project in addition to the 2021 Course Projects in the amount of $11,000. I have a motion by Holene. Second by Villar, and I'll ask the Parks Director and Forestry Director, Terry Kelly, to tell about this one, please.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. What we have before us is just really an updated professional service agreement for the design work for both the 2020 rebid and the 2021 expanded scope of the project. Small background, if you recall, last, late summer, we did reject the bids that we received on the, on the green renovation project, basically at a cost. What we've done at this point, we've reached out to the same consultant to ask him to revitalize the scope to, to both a smaller scale, but again, to add what we're looking for for the 2021. So the project will still involve the three greens, both Blue 1, Blue 2, and Red 8, in addition to a lift station project and some wetland areas and some standing water issues we have. The pricing did go down, it's not reflective on your supporting documents, but I have been working with Brandy and Justin on doing some internal engineering as far as the standing water issues we're facing out there. So to move forward with the rebid for 2020 and to add a little bit of 2021 work and change the scope, we're just looking for your approval to have the mayor enter into this professional service agreement for the design, both the rebid of 2020 and the new project of 2021.
All right, thank you, Terry. Any questions, council? All right, look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed signify by saying nay. Motion- Motion carries. Thanks, Terry. Item K is consideration of policy regarding council meeting public decorum. So I will take this one myself. I included in the packet a proposed policy which would give us a document to refer to if, if we ever need to, if we have a situation where people, too many people show up for the time allotment, or we have inappropriate conversation going on during the public comment period. So I circulated the policy around, and it includes most of the people's comments. My original draft did not include a sign-up sheet, but that is included in the proposed draft. So I'm hoping that the council had a chance to think it through and look at it, and they can adopt it as is or modify it. So I'll look for a motion to approve it.
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Holene and a second by Lalum, and then we can discuss it. So are there any questions or comments right off the bat? Councilman Lalum?
If this passes, I'd like to have that posted so that when anyone comes in, they're fully aware that it's there, so that if we do, you know, have to acknowledge it or to go to this document, that they hopefully will have read it or at least seen it beforehand. And I'd kind of like to have that on our website as well.
Sure.
Just, or maybe in the, you know, council packet as additional document. I mean, I think that's a good one, just for people to be aware of what the decorum is when they come in.
Right. Councilman Bill Howard, did you want?
Just a, maybe a comment, a question. As far as requiring people to sign up, that's not unusual. Our Codding County Commissioners do the same thing at their meetings, our Planning Commission, Commissioners do that at their meetings, requiring someone to register or to sign up. So what we're asking is not out of line with what other organizations are doing in the community. Is it our intent to have this also apply to the Planning Commission, to the Airport Board, to, you know, the other, other groups around town that, that are city affiliates? That the intent is well for those groups? I'm just asking, I guess I haven't given that much thought, just posing the question now.
And I have been asked, and I, I think that I, I don't know that I'd want to necessarily impose the same procedures. They could adopt it if they so chose, and here we have a policy that could easily be adopted. I don't know that I want to make it, some of these things, like the signup part, that's a, it's an extra additional hassle, really. I mean, I, we didn't have anybody today, but I would have had to remember to get the signup sheet and have it handy and see if anybody was on there, and not that it's a big deal, I could certainly do that, but that is an extra step that we're not doing right now. And what, what happens if you forget? I guess it's a delay and go get it, and I don't know. I actually, since they've been doing this, I haven't even really noticed the Plan Commission transferring up to the chairman, and the chairman hasn't even been at the meetings, and they never have anybody. I've never seen anybody come to the public comment period.
You're right.
But Heath, do they, like, make an effort to?
Yeah. You bring up a good point, Mayor, where the logistics of how that goes, how that is carried out in the meeting, at the Planning Commission meeting, staff would facilitate the signup sheet and present it to the chair, or since we've been meeting remotely, let the chair know that, you know, citizens X, Y, Z have signed up. But I do think if we were going to initiate that at the council meetings, we would want to internally figure out those logistics. Is that a function of the finance office staff? Is that a function the mayor themselves would perform? What would that look like, and who's going to facilitate it, just so it doesn't get left forgotten or?
Right.
A mishap like that occur?
Right. And I, I wouldn't, I don't know that we need it. I think I could see where it might be helpful when you have a packed room, and the people that have signed up would get first opportunity to talk until the time is run out, and then if there is leftover time, you can offer that to others. So either way, I guess I'm, I'm okay with it. I would like to say another thing that there was a little bit of disagreement on was the amount of time. I put five minutes in here, my draft had three minutes, and I included the words, "For good cause, the mayor may extend the time for individual speakers or the maximum time for oral communications." And I think that we should actually say extend or shorten. And, and then if we do have a packed house, if we leave it at five minutes, and I've got 15 people that want to speak, I can say three minutes per person instead of five, and, and so on, if I, if we could do that. So I would say at least add the word or shorten. Yes, Councilman Holene?
If you're looking for an official motion on that, I would, I would make that, you know, to add the words or shorten. And while we're at it, the grammar nerd in me would point out bullet point three in the three, in the section 3.0 procedure, on the third line, it should be what, comma, if any, comma, action.
Yes, I agree. Missed that one. Sorry about that.
So I would just make those two, one, one addition, one correction.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Okay. Where is this here? Just to modify the amendment, since you, you're the ones that made and seconded, okay? Any other discussion about this? Councilman Holene?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to commend you for taking the lead on this to craft a policy. I think it's probably long overdue, and I think it's better for the decorum of the meetings, and which I think in turn reflects better upon the entire community of the city of Watertown to have orderly meetings. I just want to say, in this area, in this era of social media, people behave so much better when they have to write down their name. And it's, I know it's a little thing, but I've witnessed it so many times, it just really helps the person behave, and I think it just would help all of Watertown. So thank you for that, and I would commend passage.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Bueller?
Thank you, Mayor. On the, on the section, you and I have had discussion about this, the, the five minutes, and I know I, that was one of the things I sort of proposed too, in the, when you're looking at doing this, but I, I think, the more I've thought, I think three minutes makes more sense on, on the initial time allotment.
Anyone care to disagree?
I'll disagree. Go ahead, Adam.
Councilman Lalum?
I would disagree as well. I think you, if you have a large group that are going to be talking anyway, you know, if there's 15, 10 to 15 people that are signed up, you can't give everyone five minutes either way. So by us putting in that, allowing it to be shortened, I think that'll take care of some of that. Nothing against Bruce's idea at all. I do think that if other boards and groups wanted to modify this to their, what, what would work for them, I, I think that's fine, in my opinion as well.
All right, thank you.
Adam, are you, Adam, are you think, I was proposing we go to three minutes.
Yeah, but Reed and I actually allowed the mayor to shorten it from five minutes if needed, so I didn't know if that would take care of it or not, Bruce.
Okay, well, yeah, I just, we've got five minutes on here. My, my intention was to, to make it go to three minutes.
Councilman Hoyer?
Just so we're clear.
Okay, and is that a motion, Bruce, or just a suggestion for conversation?
Well, if we need to make a motion, I'd make a motion, we shorten the, the speaking limitation to five, to three minutes.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion by Bueller and a second by Rademski to change it from five minutes to three. Let's talk about that a little bit. Councilman Roby?
Procedurally, are we handling this, should that be a?
Okay, so...
I think we should handle the First Amendment first, but we could ask Matt if...
Okay, so the, the First Amendment was the primary maker and seconder of the motion? So do I need to take an action on that if they made a motion and then amended it? Matt?
Revis it?
So the maker of the motion amended the original motion?
Yes, to short, add the word shorten. That was, the original motion was made by Holene and seconded by Lalum, and then Holene and Lalum made the motion to add the word or shorten. So we should probably vote on that, huh?
Mayor, could you?
Let, let Matt answer, he's...
It's my interpretation that the original motion maker can amend it without action. I mean, there's still the consideration of the actual motion as amended.
Okay, so if someone's adding a second motion to change the wording in there somewhere, it's as good as amended if the, the first step, the first change?
If the person that made the original motion was the same person that made the amendment.
Yes, okay, so we'll have to, if someone wants to modify it further, how do we do that properly?
There would need to be a vote on the amendment.
On the, the amendment before we take the case? So we'll discuss the three-minute amendment. Councilman Hoyer?
I think the flexibility you have with the First Amendment that was made sufficiently covers the three-minute concern. I mean, most of the time, people don't even utilize the whole five minutes. It's so rare that we even hit that at all. If we do the signup procedure and we see that there's going to be a large number, I think there's enough flexibility there to limit it. Otherwise, most folks get done saying what they need to within that period.
True. Councilman Holene?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also agree that I, I want to see it stick to five minutes, and I know that we're arguing semantics here to either limit it to three and allow the mayor to extend it, or limit it into five and allowing the mayor to shorten it. But I would say, I can remember certain instances where the public has come up to testify upon an agenda item, and these are people who are not used to speaking in public, and they can get flustered, and sometimes it can take them a little while to even get to their point. And I think that we should show respect for them, for those people who want to step forward and express their concerns upon an item, and allow them at least some time to speak. And I know it's a little thing, but I swear it makes a difference if people know that they have five minutes versus three, because they go three, it's like, oh, man, I don't even know if I have enough time to say what I have to say. But for some reason, five is okay in people's minds, so I would say just keep it at five.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to weigh in? All right, we have a motion second to reduce the time to three minutes, so I'll take action on that. All those in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay?
Nay.
I think I need a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Albertson?
No.
Bueller?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Nay.
Holene?
Nay.
Lalum?
Nay.
Rademski?
Nay.
Roby?
Nay.
Bill Howard?
Nay.
Motion fails.
All right, thank you. So we have five minutes. Are there any other comments about the way this is written? Thing needs to be modified? All right, let's take action on that then. And this includes the word or short, the words or shorten, so the mayor may extend or shorten the time for individual, individual speakers or the maximum time for oral communications. So, yeah, and the comma, yes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, signify by saying nay? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, and then item L is review of the continued necessity of resolution number 20-15 declaring an emergency concerning the pandemic outbreak of the novel coronavirus, COVID-19, and providing for responsive measures related to the operations of the city and the protection of public health. We put this on the agenda every, at every meeting to just see if anyone wants to change anything. As it is now, we have an expiration of the wording about wearing masks. That expires March 31st unless any further action is taken. Other cities are taking action right now to extend their ordinances and resolutions that they've written. Some of them had shorter times, and they're starting to expire all around our state, but ours isn't expiring yet. So I think if we are going to extend that, we would have to do that by the second meeting in March. Otherwise, if you wanted to shorten it, you could do that now, or if you want to make any other changes, this is the time. Councilman Lalum?
I'm not looking to make any changes, but I just want to know if you could just talk about the pods and, and, you know, trying to get the vaccines out.
Sure. So a pod is a way of doing a mass vaccination of a lot of people. The rate that we're receiving vaccine in our community is slow enough that the clinics are able to do it without having to do a pod. They, as long as it's trickling in at these slow numbers that it is trickling in, we have no need for a pod. However, it's going to take us a couple of years at this rate for, to have enough vaccine to vaccinate everyone in our community. So we're hoping to get vaccine in a quantity large enough to require an event where people can all come to one location, and they'll have lots of stations with nurses and practitioners available to inoculate people with the vaccine. We, we don't know for sure if that's going to happen, but if we want to get everyone vaccinated by summertime, which is what it's sounding like the goal is, we will probably have to do a pod, because our clinics, healthcare providers, pharmacies, they're, they're going to be overwhelmed if we get a big batch of it. So we're doing the pod planning now, just in case, and so that if we hear, okay, in three weeks, you're going to get 2,000 doses, that would overwhelm our clinics. So we, we've got two weeks to get that going, and we've got all the names, and we know who's doing what, and where it's going to be, and how we're going to manage everything. So that planning is going on right now. There is no pod scheduled at this time, but we don't have knowledge of a big dose of vaccine coming to us either. So we'll just, hopefully, that will come, and then we'll have a, have a pod. Any questions about that?
I just wanted people to be aware that we are planning for that, just in case that does happen.
Right, it may not happen.
Right.
And if we do have a, a pod, I should add that our area would include four counties, would include Cottington, Clark, Hamlin, and Dool counties. So there's, there's a whole incident command team set up working on this. It's a different command team than the COVID Task Force. This command team includes lots and lots of healthcare providers, because they're the ones that actually have the knowledge and expertise for the medical acts that we're hopefully be taking if we do a pod. Councilman Hoyer?
I guess I'm just wondering for all of our essay, but how the executive order regarding masks on federal property, how does that apply to us?
Well, we don't, this is not federal property, but any federal property, yes, that any, anyone in Watertown that's on federal property would have to comply with the mask mandate. That does apply in our town, in our state, anywhere there's federal property. So I don't know where all that would, the airport? The airport?
Yes, it has, Todd's received directives from the federal level that do require masking on the airport property, on or within, on with the property or within any of its facilities.
Is there anywhere else anyone's aware of? The post office? The VA clinic, okay. Sure, yeah, so anything federal, there's a federal mandate. Good point. Anything else along those lines? All right, we'll move on then to item eight, old business. Is there any old business? Councilman Bill Howard?
Got a report since our last council meeting, our mayor, mayor old job duty committee has met twice, and we have another meeting tomorrow afternoon. Solicited good input from our HR director, economic development director, our city attorney, the mayor weighed in with some helpful comments via email. So we're meeting tomorrow afternoon with the goal still having, and we have been keeping the rest of council up to date too, as far as meeting minutes, if you want to call that, that Councilman Holene has been drafting, and with the goal of having some sort of report to present to the... and with the goal of having some sort of report to present to the, to the body at our first meeting in March. Going very well. Good, good dialogue.
Thank you. Any other old business? Councilman Villar?
One more thing, it, it's not really our old business, but as you recall at our last council meeting, we discussed the annexation and zoning of a piece of property down in the south end of town. I want to commend our Board of Adjustment for the torturous task that they had discussing that at their last meeting. That was a grueling task on their part, but I want to commend them, the way they handled it. Came up with some, you know, changes that were approved. But the, between the Board of Adjustment, the Planning Commission, they met for four hours that day, volunteers all. And I really want to commend them for the way they handled and conducted their business that day.
Yes, thank you. It was long and, like you said, torture. Councilman Holene?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if I should jump in front of Councilman Albertson, who would unlikely, who would likely ask about the progress on a possible multipurpose ICE facility. So I thought I would just take the lead on that and answer the question that I believe he was going to ask. So we have, we are continuing to make progress on creating the 501(c)(3) charity that will be able to take charitable donations to the project. I have been working with both user groups. What I want to do is create a five-member board, one member each of, from both user groups, two members at large from the community, and then one person probably in some way connected to the city to watch out for the city's interest, so that we can start taking charitable donations when we come forward with a, with a actual project. That I will also say, we met as an ICE committee about a week and a half ago, and we all discussed this. And I said, are, is everyone committed to making this happen? And unanimously, we said that we are going to come forward with a proposal. We are committed to making this happen. We want to see Watertown move forward on building this. And then I also, to make building this happen that much more readily, I want to announce a, an exciting donation. A business has come forward, they want to remain anonymous for right now, but a business has come forward with a million-dollar donation for the project. I will also say that that is not site-specific. The ICE committee has not finalized a site yet. We have three that we very much like. We just need to finalize some situations there. But we are a million dollars closer to making this happen, so this is fantastic. This shows how the community, the business leaders, and everyone is just really rallying behind this to see that this happens, and we can move on and make this happen for the betterment of all of Watertown.
Thank you. Is there any other old business? Is there any new business? Any liaison member reports? Councilman Villar?
Not really a liaison member, but I did reach out to our utilities director today. People are probably aware that Cottington Clark Electric has had today, I'm not sure what their plans are tomorrow, had rolling blackouts surrounding the area. I reached out to our utilities director, asked him where do we stand? His, his quick reply back was no issues. So I think we can take heart that, you know, in spite of what we've been dealing with, we're in good shape here with our utilities within the city.
Excellent, thank you. Any other liaison member reports? Okay, any announcements? Councilman Rademski?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to work with an organization that strictly volunteer, nonprofit organization called Sleep in Heavenly Peace. And they're, what they do is they build beds for children, and their goal is nobody in my town sleeps on the floor. And what they're looking for is more volunteers. And when I volunteered for this, there's probably, I'd say, 35 to 40 people there. And they built beds that day in the Metrics facility that was previously owned by Tarex. And Chad Oshendorf is the co-chair president with his wife Samantha. And he can be reached at 881-2675. And they are looking for someone that could possibly donate them a heated shop. So if there's any interest in that or volunteering, please contact Chad at 881-2675. Thank you.
Thank you, that's a wonderful project. How many beds have they made, do you know?
I'm not sure.
All right. Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, next item is executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2. And we do not have a reason to go into executive session, so there being no further business. I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.